We're gonna, we're gonna call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
First order of business for the board of Fairhaven Board of Selectmen. Chair Chris Cole did resign from the Board of Selectmen today. The board now needs to choose a new chair for the, for the board. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Bob Richards.
I'll second the nomination.
Jay nominates, and then Glenn seconds. Any other nominations?
Bob Richards.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richards, congratulations.
Thank you, I think, thank you, I think I've said that before. Okay, well, first things first, sorry Chris left, I don't know anymore about that. So. Pledge an appointment with the RC Flyers is next.
My name is Mike Murphy and I'm the current president of the Rockland County Flyers. We had a meeting on June 12th pertaining to our fun fly. And the membership was concerned because they all watched the select board meeting on May 17th. And it was stated that we'd only have two or three campers at our fun fly. When in fact, hope for many more than that. We don't want the select board to think we're trying to pull something over the bull over their eyes or something. We just want it to be straight up and honest, that we hope to have way more than two or three campers there at our fun fly. They also heard your concerns and mine as well. I was surprised and a lot of the members were surprised to find out that there was people flying there as often that there was. We, a lot of the guys didn't, had no idea about that. So at that June 12th meeting, we all voted to collectively only fly three days a week there. We don't want to overstay our welcome. We've got a good relationship with the town of Fairhaven. We want to keep that way. And that, that's all. I just wanted, I want to know if that's okay to have more than two or three campers there, I guess, but.
You have in the past.
You have in the past.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. And that was, that was all. Any questions or?
Questions?
I'm one of brought up, built up, being so many times up there. I, I feel, I just felt that we're being taken advantage of because when you first came here, it was going to be Sundays. And it's just keep, it's gone on towards more and more and more. And as far as the campers, it's nice to get people in there, but again, little donations would be bad. You know, it's not a campground. And I just feel, I just feel the town being taken advantage of because it went from one day with a three days, four days, you go up there through the week and somebody's up there all the time. And there's a lot of people like to walk their dogs up and down that runway. And once you put them signs up, they can't do it. And my feeling is, I feel our taxpayers should have first choice there. You know, unfortunately, the flyers aren't from our town. But that's my feelings. That's why I brought it up. You know, and I just feel that somewhere along the line, there should be, you're using it basically free. It's a town place, and if there's not too many where we do something to make some income off it, we have to maintain the place. I know you guys take care of where you, where you are, but we still have to maintain the airport. And I just felt that, I don't think the taxpayers are getting the best deal here.
Yeah, and the members, and then the membership heard that. And I got talking to some of the old guys that been around for a long time. I hadn't been around all that long. And they said, all we ever asked for before was three days. They said, I don't know how it turned into something different, but that's all we ever used to ask for was three days. So we gotta kind of get back to that, what we always did, and stick to that. And the members have agreed to do that. They're not going to be in the fair all the time. Someone could actually join other clubs and they're flying in other places now. You know, I'm not retired. I can only fly on the weekend myself. I can't be there during the weekends, but. I'm sure the club would not have any problem making a donation to the town.
My feeling is, like, when you're bringing campers in, okay. Are the campers people that are flying, or are they people that come in to see you, to watch you?
Oh, they're, they're flyers.
All of our flyers?
Yes. No spectators come to camp. We've got, we've had people come as far as New Jersey, and we have them come from Quebec, probably up there.
Well, that makes a difference. I mean, if everybody's a flyer, that's a different story.
Yeah.
I'm, I was looking at where you were opening it to the public.
Oh, no.
The public was coming in there with their trailers.
No, no, it's not, no, that's definitely not the case. No, no. We, we only invite the public on Saturday. That's our big day. You know, we fly Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but Saturday's our big day. So we have, we've got three airplanes we're going to raffle off. And we have giveaways for the registered pilots that we get from the stores and stuff, all the kind of airplane stuff. We just give it away to the pilots that are registered. And we've got wrist braces for everybody that's registered too, so we know who they are.
Alright, that's, I mean, that's a different, different, totally different than what I was getting. I was getting it that it was open to the public, and anybody could come in here with a trailer. And say, if it's people that come in here to fly, that's part of your organization, so that's a little different.
Yeah, that's just, just pilots.
Okay.
Anybody can go watch though, correct?
Anybody can go watch, yeah. Actually, one of the police officers out Sunday watching. I forget what the guy's name, he has wives and kids out there.
I'm going to check it out on these weekends.
Well, you know, I went up two years ago, I think I was.
When's your, when's your plan, this weekend?
Yeah, this weekend. We're going to be setting up tomorrow night, setting up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Carry down Sunday, we'll be out out there Sunday afternoon. Yes.
And you do a good job cleaning. I mean, the place is cleaned up.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So I, but like I said, that was my concern was that.
Yeah, no, definitely not. I wouldn't want to police that, yeah.
Now, we appreciate the relationship we got. I think one of the things I've heard from townspeople once in a while is, because you guys use it, you get some sort of ownership. You feel the ownership and, and sometimes maybe the, the townspeople feel like they're getting, you know, they're, they're second class up there. So if it's just a more working relationship with people, just make an effort to say hi and, you know, here's what we're doing. And then they're flying here and there, whatever, however it has to be to, to make people feel more comfortable. So they don't feel like they're being run off their own place.
You know, that's, that's. That has been, that has been the last thing we have. That was stressed. You know, I said, the majority of us, we have two members that are in Fairhaven. We're not Fairhaven taxpayers. We have to respect this property. We have to respect the people here. We don't own it. We don't even live here. You know, I, I live in New York State. I don't even live in Vermont.
Where, what are the three days that you're looking at?
Setting up tomorrow.
No, no, I mean, you said you were going to use like three days a week.
Oh, Saturday, Sunday. And we schedule Tuesday. If it rains on Tuesday, we fly on Wednesday. Like the Fourth of July weekend, everybody had Monday off, so we flew Monday instead of Tuesday.
Right.
And if it rains on Wednesday, we don't fly again till the weekend, so.
You know, where people know what days you're there. That's what I'm thinking.
Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, we schedule.
Great. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in, clearing that up.
Devin?
Yes, we are.
Good evening. How are we?
How you doing?
We officially congratulated you for the.
You have, and I appreciate that very much. It's always nice to have a Fairhaven boy out there.
It is.
And I enjoy coming back here. It's always a special treat. So, as you probably all know, we're working through the very early stages of planning for the downtown improvement projects. And part of that is, you know, hiring a consultant to do the engineering design work. So we're kind of in that phase now. And talking to Joe, it sounded like there were some potential changes to the scope. I just wanted to take an opportunity to come and talk to you guys about that tonight and really see, you know, what the board's sort of thoughts were on the project and the specific elements. So I'll start by just sharing this map. And we can pass it around, but hopefully everybody can kind of see it. Just start here.
Here, Gavin. Good for some.
I guess I'm over, that's it. Alright, so this.
See, I would have pinned it right on there, right there.
We could do that too. So we're oriented library here, Main Street here. So this was the map that was submitted with the grant application last year. And this design really was born out of the two scoping studies done in 2019 and 2020 with Stan Tech and New Boy AK. So as you guys probably remember, the town had applied for three previous years and was unsuccessful. And the majority of the project before focused on simply replacing the sidewalk units here and a little bit of work with crosswalks. And so we kind of went back to the drawing board and Joe and I worked very closely on this and Glenn as well. And we said, okay, what is really going to put this project apart from the rest and what's the motive? You know, what, what's the intention with this project? And primarily, we thought that safety is the number one reason to do anything downtown Fairhaven. Fairhaven, as you know, super wide travel lanes, very wide crosswalks, not good line of sight, fairly high vehicular speeds. So the focus of this project was really going to be, you know, narrowing up these crosswalks, creating these curb extensions, and looking for opportunities to narrow the travel lanes so cars didn't feel like they had the Indy 500 track in front of them in downtown Fairhaven. Really signal to the drivers that this is a downtown. It's not State Route 4 anymore. It's Fairhaven Main Street, you know. So two pieces of this that Joe had mentioned might be pulled out of the project are the downtown island in the block, which I can understand that might be a contentious piece. And the East Park extension, which is this piece here. So I know that this is probably going to be one of those things. It's a big change for downtown and it might be not perceived as the most popular. The reason why it's in here is because it really provided an opportunity to again, provide some traffic calming elements by narrowing these lanes while still maintaining some parking and also giving you some green space. Because frankly, you're paying to pave a large section of town that's useless, right? You can't park in there. Frankly, it's used only as a paved area, sort of like the sea of asphalt out here. But, you know, that is to me less important to this piece right here. And this piece right here is really that narrowing while maintaining your parallel parking. Because right now, if there's park, you know, if it's.
What would that be? Just green?
This would be essentially more curving than just grass and trees. And also could be a dedicated, it's not illustrated well here, but the intent would be to have a dedicated transit pull-off zone. You've seen them, they're sort of slightly angled curb cuts where a bus can get out of the travel lane and not be pulling up traffic. But the big piece with this is, you know, when there's an event like, you know, Spring Fling or any of those where there's cars parked along that edge, you feel like the lane's a little bit narrow, maybe slow down. But that is so infrequent that you use all of those parking spaces that it feels very, very wide there. So that was the reason to bring that curb out, extend the park. And when there are cars parked there, people are really going to slow down because it will be more along the lane width that V-Trans would prescribe, you know, the 11, 12 foot lane. So in talking to Joe, you know, if you're really concerned about maintaining downtown businesses and circulation in this piece, perhaps a good sort of solution could be to pull this back into here. And I understand you guys have a temporary parklet there now. That could be curved and grassed and be made a little bit of a permanent park for, you know, your downtown brewery to use. It's still, no one parks in that spot now. Sort of useless, might even make snowballing easier. But this piece in particular, I was hoping, you know, you guys would either reconsider or have a discussion about the importance of this as a safety countermeasure. To really slow cars through the village.
How much on that stretch by the park?
Here?
No, by the park.
Yep.
How many, how many parking places are in those?
None.
So you're going to put the cars closer to the street? Is that what you're doing?
Yep, exactly.
You gotta get out of the, you gotta get out of the 1960s thinking.
I understand, but I understand you're going to, I, I understand where V-Trans leaves in a 12 to 15 foot lane.
15 is on a pretty big side. We'd like 11, 12.
That's my, you know, my question. I just don't want to see, I agree with what you're saying. I agree, you've got to slow stuff going down the street. But I just don't want to see where, my problem is you get somebody that's got a three-quarter ton truck or a ton truck and they park there and the back of the truck is into the driveline. I mean, are you going to limit what can be parked there? Are you going to limit the size of the cars?
Nope.
Because you know, because you got the bank, you got a lot of guys that, you know, that have the bigger trucks that park there to go into the bank.
Sure.
You know, and I just don't want to see the back of them sitting out in the lane or somebody might catch it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And everybody's got a hitch on it that long, that truck.
Right, right.
You know, and that's be my only concern. And the only other question I've got is down.
Here, in the island?
Okay, farther down.
Here.
What's that, what's that going to be?
That's a curb extension.
Just going to be a curb out for, for crosswalks.
Yeah, yeah, so you can actually see that person. Because you, as you guys know now, this one and this one, I believe this is 255 feet of KALPs. And that is, it's unheard of. You know, I mean, that's, that's a lot of unprotected space for somebody walking there. So yeah, we were trying to make that a pinch point to a degree. You know, still plenty of space to travel through.
Is that, is that what the other one is in the parking lot also?
This?
Yep.
Yep, but that is going to be part of your, that's part of the design. So kind of that cohesion. So you're actually gonna, we had budgeted for this piece. So you're going to save a little bit of money there because we can pull that out.
My, my question is when you, we have two different things. We have electric charging stations that are in here to make sure we keep those. But if we're going to save by not doing that over there and this here, you see where the sidewalk stops at the sicko station?
Yes.
Some of the real terrible sidewalk we have right here. If there's a trade-off, if there's any monies, and I know everything is expensive, but just in the back here, my, my, my wish list is, is front of Durfys and that, that sidewalk in through there.
Completely agree, yeah.
Because if it doesn't come out of this project, we need to, as a board, come up with a way to.
Definitely needs to be an additional phase, right? It's a really decorated piece of sidewalk there. Unfortunately, I can almost guarantee there's not.
There's not going to be any money.
They're saying year over year, these V-Trans projects are seeing 25% increases. So now, unfortunately, we're a year too late, but now this year when we applied for towns, we included a 5% year-over-year escalation factor, which I wish we had the opportunity to do that for you guys last year. But I can tell you this, if there were to be some sort of overrun, this was the highest scoring project in the state of Vermont last year. They are going to give you more money if you need it. I can almost guarantee.
So your sidewalk now, on the west side of the road, is going to stop in front of the Dunkin' Donuts?
Correct, yep.
So it stops there where the.
Where the curb cut is, yeah.
So the only section we got left to do is in front of Durfys.
Exactly, yeah. And if, because I believe that it's asphalt down along. It's a prospect. So back to your question, Jay, real quick. You know, none of these things will be designed out of compliance with federal highway standards and N E T C B. The consultants will have to run everything by V-Trans. So the design standard for an angled parking space like that will have to meet that requirement where there's nothing sticking out to the travel lane. The most logical solution there, and I saw your scoping study, is the angle for the angle parking change to a little bit tighter degree so you could fit more in at a longer length. So I don't think that'll be an issue.
What's, what's the footage that you're going to be grassing? I mean, let's put that. Or you have no, you're just, right now, you gotta wait, yeah.
Yeah, until the real engineers get out there and survey.
But the main sidewalk down in front of, on the east side of the road.
Yep.
That'll all be the same width as what it is now?
Yes, yep. Along with street lights were included in this project, or, sorry, pedestrian lights, right?
Right, we're putting some lights.
So it should be more usable space? So the, I guess that the last piece to really discuss with you guys is what is the preference here? And, you know, I would say, think about it, but we kind of are in a position now where we need to firm up the scope for the consultants. So if, if this is really just kind of a pain in the side of the town, understandable. But I think looking at this as an opportunity to do a little pocket park that's perfect.
I think that's the compromise. We could move everything else in that corner, like where that V is now.
Yep.
And have your parking all beside the road and put the rest of that grass. It'll certainly make it a lot easier for plowing because you wouldn't be getting in that corner.
So you were saying like, cut this off here and have parallel parking like that?
Just like the same things you're going to do in front of the park.
Yeah, so curve this.
It'd be more.
It'd be more.
You could get more parking in there that way, couldn't you?
We did walk this with Aaron last year and determined that even if you took all the parallel, or sorry, angled spaces out of here and just had parallel spaces between these two curb extensions, your net loss was like three or four spaces. It was miniscule in the savings in terms of maintenance and future, you know, asphalt work. It's pretty substantial. Now, that change is a little bit more substantial than what I prescribed because you're really, you're, you're making a pretty big change there. So I don't know.
But you're making a mini park there.
You are, you are, yeah. And you guys have, you know, one of the alternatives in that 2019 study was to do just that, right? Now, I don't know if that scope is really within this budget to do that full shebang. We could look to try to, you know.
If you're not doing.
This, I figure, it was about 80, 200,000, I figured.
And then you're, if you move that, the other side into the corner, it's got, it's, it's less space.
Maybe we just don't make it so dramatic, maybe not push it out so far, really sort of hone it in here to make that angle right.
Get rid of this.
What I was.
Yeah, that does nothing for anybody. That's, I guess, where most of the accidents happening is that rear angle.
Yep.
Coming out of there.
What I, what I'm thinking is, is like you say, a less extreme bend there, but, and that might accommodate some more parking.
There'd be parallel, right?
Well, and that, no, if you weren't going to do the full push out to the road, then you would still have angled parking.
Oh, okay. Not only that, herbicide.
And that would help the downtown businesses with their tables and stuff if they, if they choose to put tables out there. Because the tables are always full.
Right.
You know, and other businesses may want to do the same.
And it's safer for the snow there.
So I guess.
The dangers that you're going to get, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's a better.
So, and obviously, we're looking at a tabletop survey here, drawn on a map, so it's not very exact. I get that. But would we be, you know, obviously, the angle generally speaking is there. So would, would we be looking at something like this or something further out like that?
I would say Kamel, personally, I would think Kamel where your parking is going to be.
As far as you can.
Yeah, the parking is going to be right, so you're at the, where they park is going to be at the roadway.
Right, so where this design.
It's not going to make, it's not going to make a bottleneck there.
Yep.
People still can get the laundry mat and they can.
Yeah, well, you get more, it's going to work out better.
It would give them, it would give us, it would give all them downtown businesses a lot more options to do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And in terms of, you know, deliveries or logistics in that sense, you know, when we go through the design phase, we can really survey those businesses to determine what are the needs for transportation. Do we have to put a little mini hidden service road behind the edge? No, that's not accessible by anyone else other than the businesses or, you know, the fire department, what are their needs for those pieces too? So we can make that determination during that process. But knowing upfront where we're going to go with it is really what I wanted, I wanted to come here today and figure that out, so.
Bill?
I said two things for Devin, though. The first one is a question with the, with the change for the crosswalk. Yeah, are we going to gain back any spaces in front of the community center? Because I know that was a bone of contention over the crosswalk being taken out back in years ago.
Yeah, you actually might. Obviously, we need to maintain compliance with the 20-foot setback, but if you, so without curb extensions, the law is a 20-foot setback for the travel lane approaching on parking. But with a curb extension, that's reduced to 10 feet. So there's a whole nother parking space. So you actually might gain spaces.
You know, that was one thing that the owner down there complained about. I think if that was in design, it would benefit me.
Yep.
The other was just the comment about the accidents. The problem with the corn we have, this is a free-for-all and everybody eats. So some go this way, this way, and which way, and that's where we get.
Right, from our accidents and accidents.
There's no flow out of there. So if I back up and want to go across, I go across. If I want to.
Got to imagine the same with the parking lot, right? Cross any which way without any curving and you won't see it till it's.
Which is going to change because it's one way. Part of it is one way.
And how that fits into this, I got to imagine when somebody's coming into town, it's going to be like, well, already when you come into town, the first thing you notice are the buildings on the park, right? But seeing these pieces, I think it's really going to force people to slow way down, especially those big trucks that can just hammer through here, you know.
The other thing is we're going to gain some parking when they do the new design.
Right.
In the parking lot.
So that could alleviate a little bit of stress.
So even if you lose a couple on Main Street, you're going to gain them back on the other side.
Yeah, as long as there's a, a net neutral or net positive, I think we're in really good shape. Especially considering the benefit added is massive, right? Because I think ultimately, you know, supporting those other modes, public transit, like head, is what this project's going to do, right? So.
Well, the reason I said the 1960s, I'm the only one on this board that actually had to risk, risk their life getting across the street in the, in the 60s. That was Route 4.
Sure.
You know, that was.
Yeah, that was Route 4.
Yeah, and, and that was a, that was an adventure.
Long trip, yeah.
That's it.
I got struck in the middle of the building.
Oh, yeah. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, we, if, if we can close that up and, and slow it down, it's worth it. Weight and gold, I think.
Awesome. Well, moving forward, you know, Stephanie, work at our office is going to be the, obviously, is the project manager. So she'll be sort of the point person on this. Obviously, I'll be somewhere in the background weighing in on some of the design elements and working with the consultant. But yeah, you have stuff moving forward. Certainly reach out to her. Joe's been working with her quite a bit. So we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit with the consultant. They haven't produced sort of the best sort of cons for us yet, but we have other options. It's, it's one of those other options, so. Awesome. Anything else for me?
Just one quick. The sidewalk itself.
Yep.
Is that going to be just concrete?
Yeah, at 50-year lifespan versus 25, there's.
Curves in concrete, correct.
Curved in concrete. Right now, I believe in the budget, we have concrete curbing. But if any of that old granite curbing can be reused, then maybe we should reuse it. Because it is way nicer, but the cost per foot on granite curbing right now, I think, is $50 a foot. So it's a little cost prohibitive at this point.
A lot of that, I think, is good. It just needs to be straightened up and.
Yeah, most of it is reusable.
Probably very, you know.
And that could save a little bit of money depending on, you know, labor time and everything, so. Yeah, we'll try to make it go as far as we possibly can.
So what's going to happen when we find all the, all?
Coal shoots.
Oh, God, I don't hear that. I don't hear that, Jay.
Coal shoots, coal shoots.
Yep, that'll be a consultant problem down there.
Don't, don't forget to tell them.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure they, they look for that kind of thing in old.
Yeah, luckily, there was a full historical archaeological survey done during that first study, I believe. So I think a lot of that work is done.
Well, I could, I can tell you where there's two of them.
They'll probably fall down, I don't think. Awesome, well, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it, I'm really looking forward to this project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
When, when do you think it would, when do you think it would start?
Oh, God, you know.
In my lifetime.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I would say, I would hope we would be constructing no later than twenty twenty-five, but I'm hoping twenty twenty-four.
Hang in there, Jake.
I gotta live at least two more years, I think.
Yep.
It's nice to have you.
Oh, yeah, anytime. Thank you all.
Thanks for coming in.
See you later.
Oh, did you need, did you need this for your drawings?
Oh, I'll just. Yeah.
All right, here, I'll just do, y'all suffer with that.
You sure?
Yeah.
Oh, I did your fresh one, number that.
Thank you, Devon.
Yeah.
Thanks, Evan.
Okay, thanks.
Amendments to the agenda. My lunch going twice. Approval of the minutes, we have two, correct? June twenty-eighth, first?
I'll make a motion for June twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And June, or July fifth?
Motion.
Second.
The tax rates are correct on this as written?
Tax rates are correct. We, uh, we actually saw a reduction in the tax rate this year.
The first time I remember, not a long time.
My, my appraisal went down.
The state didn't cut in as much.
Okay, y'all, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, five minutes for public comment. Sir.
My name's Bob Workman. Uh, I moved to Fairhaven three years ago, uh, and I bought nine Main Street. Just full blown, full of street. White House. And, um, love the town, I have three children that are going to the public school system for grandchildren. And, um, one thing that I've noticed, there's one thing that really concerns me, um, about letting my kids grow up here and, and, and living here, is the amount of large truck traffic that's coming through the town. And it's just through traffic. I mean, these big grain trucks and, and logging trucks and big trailer trailers, they're not, they're not stopping, they're not buying things until they get to down to the truck stop around the town. And I've been thinking to myself, why, why should these trucks be allowed to go through a local little town like this? And has anybody ever discussed stopping the traffic at either Prospect and cutting over Ford? Because it's all twenty-two eight, it's all twenty-two eight coming up from the south. And, and, or, or in the swamp road, I mean, that's a little far back. And I know, you know, it's, it's a lot longer to get over Ford, uh, on, on swamp road. But on Prospect, it would divert them out of the downtown area. And, and, and I don't, tell me if there's any benefit of them traveling through the town.
The ones you see probably, particularly large trucks, particularly grain or anything like that, um, are probably local. And they're, like we were talking about before, they're probably stopping at the bank or getting, you know, whatever. But they're coming through, they're probably local, they may even be going out for a, um, most of them, I mean, not all of them, for sure.
Most of your grain trucks go that way because they're all going into Granville and farther down where the other plants are Salem. And that's the way, that's the only way they can get to it is down through Main Street because they have to go down twenty-two. And so that's why you see all the grain trucks, because they go through here and then they, they go up into New Haven. So that's your route going into Granville and Salem and that area.
But I mean, are you cutting them off at Prospect? Or is, is there, is there even a feasible?
I don't, I don't know how you could cut them off at Prospect because it'd be a sharp turn at the bottom of the hill. And it'd be, that'd, that'd be hard. Swamp road, swamp road isn't designed for heavy trucks. I mean, you get one once in a while, but that kind of traffic would, even though we just paved it, it would destroy that road because of the, the extra weight.
The only, the only good news in that particular end of it is what we just discussed is, is traffic calming. They'll be slowing, they'll have to be slowing down at least, and, and, believe me, that, it's, uh, I'm serious about what it was like in the sixties, it was, uh.
Do they help you shape this building right now as they go by?
I'm sure they do.
Just one point, this board tried to get the speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour. We tried that two years ago, and we got it chopped down because we felt lowering the speed limit would help everything through Main Street. And we're gonna lower all the way down Main Street and up Washington Street. And.
Up Northman.
We made a motion to do it, and then we had a petition to try and stop it, so. But I feel twenty-five mile an hour would make a big difference.
But I feel this project that we just discussed is gonna make a big, vast improvement on that stuff. It's gonna slow people down. And also, there's a couple of business owners in town that specifically indicated to me that they do not want the truck traffic to ever stop coming through town. And I says to them, why is that? And the person says to me, I have several people coming in on the weekend, and they say, I drive through here a lot of times with a truck, I'm unable to stop, but I thought I'd bring my wife back and we'd shop this weekend here. So that's a good plus. For what it, for what it is, that's.
I just know that when I'm coming from downtown to my house, and as I'm going down the hill, I put on my, my signal to, you know, turn on my flashlight, I'm looking every single time.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're coming around there.
Yes, they are.
You know, at the time, I pull in the center of the road.
They come over that hill a little fast, come over the tracks.
Yeah, it's a little scary. So, just a concern citizen, you know, just like these big trucks, I don't see the real benefit of them traveling through our town. And, and, you know, they go around, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Welcome to stay, it's pretty interesting. No, no.
You know what, I'd like to hear it every.
Yeah.
Yep. No, and if you, uh, don't feel, I was kidding, it's not that interesting. Anyone else? Thanks. Uh, department head reports.
I put a report in the box, I don't think I've got a checkbook. We had five arrests in the last week. Um, one of those arrests goes back to Josh Mark's four wheel that got stolen. If you guys remember on the board, if you remember that. That four wheel actually turned up in Detroit, Michigan.
Really?
Two months after it was stolen from here. Interesting story, if you haven't heard, the guy, a guy found it on the auction website for the police department. The guy highlighted the pin, and when he put the pin in the computer, brought it back to Facebook, that Josh Mark had posted. The guy called him, he ended up going out and recovering. Unfortunately, it cost him seven, eight hundred bucks to get it out of his pound. Um, Detroit has a different way of doing things than Detroit. So that was recovered. We did make an arrest, not for the theft, we did make an arrest for the ninety-four, uh, the guy breaking his trailer. We arrested him last night. Simple assault, we have a stolen car, it was a clock driver, it was a C D operator, almost a ten. Um, there were fifty-eight traffic tickets, nineteen warnings, two apartment violations, we had two car crashes. We had thirty-two sets of civilian fingerprints. Fee went up to twenty-five dollars effective July first. We were at twenty. And then there's a list of miscellaneous things that we have. We are starting to process for the water ordinance, I got official list today, sending out some, some violations. And Bourbon Pro says if he comply, we'll dismiss the violation, you know, within a X amount of time. Ed Hunter's starting his fifth year. The other night, officers removed some subjects late night in the seating area outside the brewery. Um, they ended up being underage with alcohol. Um, the officers ended up ticketing them and moving them along, but they had nothing to do with the brewery, it was late night, midnight. We've been trying to monitor who's sitting around that area. And then, uh, Mike Hoffman has decided to leave his car to him, he's gonna work full time. He wasn't working very much, I approached him, he thought might be his best interest to drop off the job. Oh, and I did follow up with the camper, you see the camper's gone. Um, when I got there, he was putting license plates on the camper, he said he hadn't been putting them on yet. And he was taking it to the shop the next day, so it was early in the next morning, because that means one of the.
Questions for the chief?
Nope.
I got, I just got a comment, I'm gonna thank the police officer that was down at the park the other night at the concert. Very good, he helped us quite a bit.
I'll relay that back.
Yep.
Thanks, chief.
So we'll start with some communications. Uh, no, communications first.
Okay.
Uh, Dodge House sent a letter thanking the Concerts in the Park for their donation. Uh, another seven hundred and forty-five dollars went to that, to that organization from the fifty-fifty fundraiser that they hold in the park. So it's a great organization that, that.
The town. Forty.
That was the, that was the army band.
That was the army band, nice.
Uh, we also got a request from Rachel Miggs at Scotch Hill Brewing, uh, the, you know, downtown. Uh, she's interested in joining the Economic Development Committee, and she's asked the board if they would appoint her to that committee. I don't know if the board is interested in doing that tonight or not.
Is there, is there a certain number that we have to meet, or is it open, or?
Five in the bylaws, and we have two openings, and the board discussed it, and we recommend.
I'll make the motion that we do it.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye. Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, you need one more, then, don't you?
I need one more.
Interested?
Yeah, if anybody's interested in joining the Economic Development Committee, they got a lot going on.
Yes, they do.
It's, um, to jump ahead a little bit, we are look, we are going through our. They did, they said yes. Uh, we are looking at our, our business grant competition that started yesterday, so, um, the EDC's working on that.
We had any take, they just started?
I think three applications.
Three applications, good.
I reached out to a couple of folks that said they were interested, and they just, they didn't have time to finish up, so they said maybe next year, which is fine, you know?
There.
Yeah, that's always there. Uh, DPW, the colors on Green Road are done, uh, the patching job, one turned out really well, one's got a little bit of a bump to it. Uh, they're gonna wait to see if that settles down, if not, they'll go back and they'll, they'll smooth it out. But they know it is a little, uh, a little bumpy. Uh, they also did some hot mix up on Scotch Hill Road to try to patch over that. Um, something while I'm, while I'm on that subject. Uh, the pavers are coming in, the grinding, they said next week, but you know how that works, it could be the week after. Uh, an idea was floated by DPW that, um, perhaps instead of, um, spending the whole pot of money this year on, on our paving plan, maybe use a, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars to put a thick shim coat over Scotch Hill. In the bad spot, it's, the guys are spending a lot of time up there patching it, plus the cost of the patch. We thought maybe that would be a cost savings, uh, to the town by just like taking care of it until we can pave it.
Where would that money come from?
Uh, right out of paving.
So, okay.
Yeah, right out of the paving line, so we do have that money, we would just have to, we'll do fourth and we'll do.
Furnace.
Furnace. And we were supposed to do airport, try and repave some of airport road.
Underneath the bridge.
Yeah, underneath the bridge. Um, but the way Scotch Hill is now, it, it might behoove us to make that patch, because it's bad.
Skip the airport this year and go to Scotch Hill?
Yeah.
Might be, that might be a way to go, I mean, Scotch, the airport could actually use it from the, from Fourth Street.
All the way.
All the way to the bridge at least. You got, you're gonna have two businesses off, outloading there between, between Dunkin' Donuts and, and, uh, drugstore, so it might be worthwhile to do something more extensive there.
I think if we could get up to Scotch Hill and do some, do some ditching along with the shimming, I think that would be a vast improvement, and I think it would be money well spent.
Brush cutting, there's some brush to be cut there, that's for sure.
The only thing I wanna make sure, that they keep enough money in their asshole, so they can go get loads of hot mix and do some patching where they can do it. Or if they have to dig a culvert, I wanna make sure there's money here, that they can go get a load of hot mix and fix the culvert. I don't, I don't wanna hear anymore about, we don't have the money to fill, just up here in Canarvan Street. You know, that's, that's down an inch up there again, so it's a big hole to go through it. And I just don't understand why they haven't paved that yet.
Well, they got work to do there, that's, that's the only.
They're waiting for something.
They're waiting for parts.
They're waiting for parts.
There was some old line that they had to, to backward some parts that they just couldn't get.
See, without the information, you don't know.
Yeah.
So if somebody asks me why it hasn't taken care of, I have no idea why.
The reason why is because they're waiting for parts.
Okay, well, that's, if everybody had known that, it would be a lot easier. But I hope they're gonna do it and, uh, pipe.
Oh, no, our guys are doing that.
Yeah, just make sure there's enough money left for loads of cottons.
So guidances, do the streets that approved, and then see what that looks like and move forward with Scotch Hill.
Do something, yeah, I think that ditching will help a lot.
Who's doing the manholes on Fourth Street?
Our guys are doing Fourth Street. I think they did them already, they did them today.
I don't know if they have or not, I'm just wondering if who's, because I was told that pipe was gonna be going up.
Our guys did them today.
Okay.
And they're gonna get the one down here on Main, uh, they got a new ring for it, they're gonna cover it, they're gonna repair it and cover it with blacktop. And then when they repave Route Four, they'll just, they'll make sure that it's rebuilt and then flush.
It does look like it's settling, so they gotta do something. It's been a month, it's been a month, so it's time to take care of that.
On Fourth Street, where we're gonna be milling that and, and paving, you're saying our road crew is gonna adjust the manhole covers and everything, or is pipe gonna do that? I just wanna make sure where, because my understanding is, our guys aren't gonna do it, pipe is gonna do that. Has that changed?
If it's just a ring, if they just need to raise or lower that manhole, pipe will do it, so that way it's flat. If it's structure, if it's structure work underneath, our guys will do it, but right now, it doesn't sound like there's any structure work to be done. It sounds like it's just making sure that it's at the right height.
Are they gonna have some new rings in place so they can, if they have to put one on, if they don't have the whole paving?
Yes, we'll have, that'll be ready to go.
That's right.
Yes, no, we're not gonna hold up paving for this.
I don't know, make sure we got the rings in case they have to use them.
So, uh, I think it was over on Prospect. Mr. Green, was that you that asked about the paving on Prospect, the guys that doing the holes?
Somebody, somebody done some, uh, yeah, did you find out who that was?
I, I did, there was, uh, some guys, a company came in and gave us a demonstration of, of a machine that, that seals up these, the, you know, where the gator cracking happens.
Yep.
There's a machine that actually does the repairs instead of just trying to hop, what do you call it, put the rubber in it, which doesn't work. Um, so they did a little demo out here and did some potholes for us and showed us what, what they can do. That's what, that's what that was.
Did you see that?
No, I haven't.
I, I did.
Is that the big heater, that arresting spot there? Where you put the heater on foot?
Just down on the left side, you can rest.
Liquid, uh, uh, stuff there. Like the liquid tar they.
Not impressed, I tell you?
No, they were very impressed.
Yeah.
It, it worked out really well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what else we got going? Oh, so milling is. Oh, so milling and sh, or sedge lawn. So, once, once they start milling down on Fourth Street, our guys will be coming in and getting that ditching done, um, and, and doing ancillary work to make sure that project is on schedule. So, we'll reach out and let folks know that that's coming, which soon.
You say that's next week and week after?
Start, possibly.
Next, yeah.
On the grinding?
They always tell me it's next week, and then it's always two weeks, so I just, I...
They're gonna, they're gonna grind, let the guys go take care of the ditching, then they're gonna come back and pay it, correct?
Yep.
It will be paid before school starts, correct?
That's what I was pushing for, um...
Because that's, it's just such a mess when they're trying to do that stuff. And you got fifteen buses running down there.
It'd be a nightmare. Yep, it'd be a nightmare. Uh, we are gonna do some crack seal this year. They're gonna rent a machine in September. Uh, it was, it was ridiculously expensive to have somebody come in. It was five thousand dollars for a day to have somebody come in and crack seal, which you get nothing. Um, so they're just gonna rent the machine and then, and then crack seal themselves. It's kind of a cost savings if we do it ourselves. Uh, water, we did put off flushing those hydrants again because of the, uh, uh, trailer park. Although, I will say, Chuck's here, um, talking about the trailer park. The trailer park did find that leak, and Chuck, Chucky found the leak, and Chuck capped it. So, uh, we checked the water, we've been monitoring that water meter. Um, and it looks like they're using about half as much water as they were previously. I mean, it was a dramatic, dramatic drop.
When do they think they're gonna do the flushing? Are they waiting to just keep an eye on the water meter for a while?
Yep, they're, uh, uh, they're looking towards fall now. Just as we move into construction season to take guys off of construction and have them flush for a night. It's the reason we did it in the spring. Uh, chem tanks for the, uh, water plant, those bids will be in for the next meeting. We talked about getting a couple of tanks for that. Um, and we're having a meeting on the, uh, what's today, on the twentieth, uh, to talk about this water line replacement downtown before the paving comes through. So, Aldridge and Elliot will be here to talk about that.
What, one day? What day?
Uh, twentieth. Uh, for sewer, uh, tomorrow at ten AM, we meet with, uh, the contractor and Aldridge and Elliot. Uh, the plant is, is what they're calling substantially complete. So, that project is finally boiling down and, and almost finished. Um, we are still waiting for the garage and that chem storage room to be done, but at this point, they're just, they're just kinda picking away at stuff. So, thank goodness, things are, projects are coming to an end around town.
I bought an elevator project.
Uh, the elevator is here. Uh, we're waiting on electrical components. Those have been tough to come by, I guess. So, the electrical components that actually go in to operate the elevator downstairs, um, are backward. Once those are in, Otis comes in and they install the elevator. They won't do it before the parts are here. Uh, from my office, um, just to keep the board, it, it's a little different than, than what we've done in the past, but to keep the board updated, um, at the last, for the last audit, the auditors said, you know, I noticed some, some purchases went through without purchase orders. And typically, it was something small, like a seven dollar bottle of water, that just, there was no purchase order for it. We started doing blanket purchase orders for these, so that way it's, I don't know, a hundred dollars worth of water. PO is good for, until it runs out of money, and then you do another one. So, that way, we stay on the, on the, the good side of the auditors, and we're following our policy. But, um, it's just gonna look different as you see POs come through like that.
I just, I just happened to look, and every PO I looked at was written before we got the invoice, so...
We're, we're trying. It's, it ebbs and flows, you know, people, we do it right, and then we don't do it right, and just gotta stay on them. Uh, we paid our first bond payment. That came out this week. It comes out of, it's a direct draw. It comes right out of the bank account.
Now, that was for the building or up there?
The bond payment.
Because in the, in the payout today, or in the payout, or payroll, not payroll, and the other one just says, for the town office, seventy-six thousand.
Yep, that was a payment for construction.
Doesn't show the bond, doesn't show the bond payer.
Didn't show the bond payer.
It, it'll be drawn out automatically, and it'll come back. Must be on the next, next warrant.
It'll be on the next warrant, okay.
I got the sheet of paper, uh, this week, last week. Uh, we've been doing good with our revenue. Revenue's up. Um, to let folks know, revenue's up about seventy thousand this year. Um, this is, so you really don't see it, you know, through the year. Um, but come budget season, we're gonna have that extra money.
Where, where is it mostly, where is it mostly up?
Uh, our, so our big winners this year were the, the Town Clerk's office, a lot of them being sold. Um, the Police Department has seen a, a substantial increase, and then pilot tax. So, those folks that have the one percent option tax, the state collects a little bit from them, and a little bit comes to us. And they've been making a killing on their one percent option tax around the state, so...
Unfortunately, we don't. We see that at Irville about Killington. They, they're made out like a bandit.
Annual business grant, we're working with the EDC on that. That'll come to the board August ninth, uh, to review those. Furnace Street, Green Street, Scotch Hill, Tax Street, and that gentleman is what I have for you.
The old business, the new business is, uh, I'm sorry, anybody got any questions for Joe? Okay, uh, new business is the trailer park discussion. Two parts, uh, deadline for water payment and administration of the park. You're back on.
Yeah, so I did get, uh, I sent an email to the, the nonprofit, the CVOEO folks. Um, and she, she responded pretty quickly after I sent it this afternoon, saying, um, this, the state, the V, V rap? I think that's what it is. The, the state that makes, the State Department that makes those payments is working with the park owner and the park to make sure we get our money, uh, though we have no update from the actual state agency yet. They seem, they seem to be full, in full faith, trying to get something done. In full, they, they seem to be doing it and, and working diligently, but so far, nothing.
But my, my question is, what's gonna happen the next quarter?
It's, so this...
We're gonna be right back where we were before. You know, they're gonna take care of this, this time. It's just like when they got the money before and paid the water bill out. Nothing else is paid, and we're right back in the same situation. Again, I'm gonna say, we're not gonna go into the winter with this situation up there. I mean, there, there's a plan in place. I mean, that we know that the money's gonna be coming in, the payments are gonna be taken care of, plus the taxes being taken care of. We pull the plug. I'm sorry, I, I hate to sound like a, a hard person here, but we're telling people, can't continue doing this.
The state will, once, once in the system, it's an eighteen-month guarantee of payment. So, you got a year and a half, but even then, unless...
I really wanna see, I wanna see it in writing. You know, everybody, everybody can make a promise.
After eighteen months, we'll be back to the one, possibly.
Yep, you're back in the same spot.
With the exception that CVO, whatever it is, may get some sort of a business plan together. That's, that's the impression I got, but we haven't seen anything yet. I, and, and it's not overnight, I get that. It's not gonna be overnight, but, but...
Somebody, somebody, I understand that somebody has to be in charge of running that bar. They have to get themselves aboard, the trustees, or whatever the case may be. But I don't know if they can do that yet because of the courts.
So, it's definitely a tough... As a heads up, we did, so pink slips went out to, today, and the park is getting a pink slip. It's our process, and we're following our process, so... I didn't know if the board wanted to set a deadline, um, for payment or not. That's why this is on the agenda.
I'll have to start first.
The pink slip, it, pink slip includes, what, what kind of numbers are we talking about right now? It's more than, more than the twenty-three or whatever we were at before?
Yeah, it was at twenty-five. It's, it's more than that now.
No, exactly, no one.
There's water, water and taxes?
There's, yeah, and taxes also, yeah.
Taxes, well, it was twenty, twenty-two or twenty-three in, in water alone.
Yep.
And then taxes were twenty...
On top of that, yeah, it's closer to forty, forty-five at this point.
When you ask the question of do we wanna set a deadline, what does our ordinance say that we do?
Well, they're already passed that.
But is there anything in there? Are we, is that, so we're, we're at, are you saying that, 'cause we're still saying to get payment? We've got people that said there's, I mean, is there anything our ordinance that...
The ordinance doesn't, this is a weird situation, right, because of COVID. What we have done in the past was, when we get these letters, we, we stop, we don't shut off the water. But we've always been paying. Some, sometimes it takes a little longer than others, but I mean, the, the money obviously shows up. Um, in this case, it's, I don't know, but... It's, it's only been a couple of weeks, but still, do we know it's gonna get paid, and...
I say, I say August thirty-first, and if the stuff isn't paid, if we don't have a plan, if the checks aren't in here and the things aren't taken care of, that's it.
It seems as though, to me, the state and you folks, uh, should be able to come up with some sort of a plan. And, you know, discuss it.
They are working on it.
We are.
Taking time, but people ain't cooperating in the park.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with Jerry. I, it's...
I mean, I went yesterday over, I mean, this big word, saying you guys are gonna pay, but we're dumb ass bad broads. They say they're sending it. They said it could take up to a week or two. We did it, so you better...
That'd be fine. That, that'd be great. I mean, but, and, and August thirty-first is a month and a half away, so...
So, that's a little bit of time.
Yeah, and, but it, it's still, for us, it just can't continue. We know that. You know that.
I know.
And if, if those guys, at the end of, you know, if they come and, and they get us up current, and then...
Have a plan.
And then have a plan at that point, then we're, we're a lot more comfortable where we are. I mean, we don't want you guys to fail. There's no, there's no profit in that. It's not good for the town, for you guys.
Chuck was here the last time, and we sat there talking, and had, had a little conversation. If they get things, if, if the state's gonna come in and say, all right, we got eighteen months, that they're gonna take care of this stuff. There's twenty places, there's twenty lots up there. I mean, that could be a nice trailer park. A little bit of work, put a new water line in, check the sewer lines, and, and get twenty spots in there, and that'd be a, a nice trailer park. But right now, the way it's going, we have, our hands are tied. You know, and if the state wants to do this for eighteen months and make sure it's taken care of, it's gonna give everybody time to maybe, to get caught up, go for some grants, see what else you can do. I know there's different, I came, there's other trailer parks that's gone through this. And I know there was two of them down on one oh-three at one time, and they went in and redone the trailer park fund. You know, with a grant. They went in and put the sewer lines in, because everything they had to do. So, if the state is gonna give us something in writing so we know, I say let the eighteen months, you know, let them get on their feet in the eighteen months. But if they don't come through, August thirty-first is it? August thirty-first?
Yeah, that's what I put in.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, make a motion. There a second?
It, it wouldn't hurt to have a motion with them.
He's got a motion, cut off as eighteen, is August thirty-first.
Is that to shut off the water?
If we, it's deadline, if we haven't, my understanding, the motion is that if we haven't received payment of past water bill by August thirty-first...
And a plan.
And a, and a plan.
Or at least tentative, at least something, yeah.
We, we start the process, shut it down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Keep on them, Chuck.
The other part of that is administration of the park. You sent us the...
Yeah, I, uh, so, let me say, this is, this is not the best of all options. And it's honestly not something that I wanna do, but, I mean, at the end of the day, what do you do, right? You have to, I, I have a firm belief that the only way that, that we'll move forward with anything, whether it's business development, home development, or taking care of this problem, is if we do it ourselves. You know, they aren't coming to help us. We're the only people that will help us. Uh, with that said, uh, I had thought of, um, petitioning the court to change the administrator of the park, particularly, particularly to me, um, so that way, at least the town would have some kind of control. We'd be able to, um, start processes to raise rates, remove people, um, and administer the park and stand it back up. Right now, the way it is with the current, uh, current administrator, I mean, we see where it's at. Bills aren't paid, taxes aren't paid, so...
Well, my feeling is, it's not the town's responsibility. And if we get, if we get the agreement that we just talked about, or just made the motion on, there's no reason for us to get involved, because there's gonna be somebody else that's gonna be involved in it and doing it. I say definitely no, as far as us doing the administration.
Right, I agree, I agree with you, Jay. It's a, and when I look, we already have you doing some of the treasurer's job. There's regular town manager work that is not getting done, and adding more, and, and taking, to get aside from, I, I agree. There's no way we want the responsibilities, the town, not looking to go into the trailer park business.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. The one thing I would say is that if there's some, some town or, um, cooperation that's needed when they get their town plan, when they get their plan together, that maybe we revisit that, but that would be, it would have to be very limited, because it, it's a private organization. It's, it's, it's somebody's business. And even if it's their guy's business at the end, it should be theirs, not we, the town. It's one thing, you've done that in past for one house. That's a big difference than administering thirty, twenty spots. And fifty people.
You've got enough on your plate for this. I do.
Yeah, I agree with you too.
Yeah, like when you get the next water bill, like right now, can, we know that you guys got paid instead of, like, the residents there, like when this goes through, like they're supposed to be going through. I mean, like, we didn't know anything about for the whole nine months, uh, when they paid it off last time. Nobody in the park even knew what was going on with the town.
We'll keep you, we'll keep you posted.
We know why we didn't send each other a letter explaining what happened.
I mean, nothing, there were no, nobody in the park even knew at all, like, nobody knew.
See, I, I feel somebody from the state should come in here with the plan, and, and you people from the trailer park should be invited, the time it's here, so you see what's going on, and you know what, the ways they're gonna set this plan on. You know what I'm saying? So, everybody knows what's going on. Nobody's left in the dark.
I, yeah, yeah, I, I would suspect that the CVO guys, they're gonna, they gotta stay in contact with you guys. You know, even more than us, but they gotta say, they gotta, you're the guys they've gotta work with. You know, we're looking, we're looking no more than we do any other homeowner in the town to just get the money that we need to run the town, and, and you're part of it. We're not, we're not, we're not, we don't wanna be involved. We don't have to.
And there are people in that park that pays taxes to the town and the trailers, and that's their own digital thing from the, um, whole park. And I went and asked for paperwork the other day from the town here, and I couldn't find nothing on them, or anybody's paid anything. It says it comes up with no fees to some of these trailers, and people are paying taxes to this town. Where's that money going?
That's not your job.
That's, that's the trailer itself. That's, that's the home itself. You have, you have the land taxes
Right, well, they know.
That the trailers parked on is different than...
And I came in here the other day and paid seventy-one dollars for a whole copy of the deeds that were at park. On who owned what, who was paying what, and what taxes we're doing and everything. I didn't get shit. It was just a bunch of crock of shit saying that nobody's got deeds.
There should be, there should be a record of everybody that pays taxes.
That's... Not, that's not, that's not accurate, Chuck.
Well, if I picked up that day. I mean...
Make sure that it's, it's explained well, and, and that there's an answer for that.
Because I know Denise was in here, girl's tax, she's down on vacation right now, or she'll probably be here tonight. She asked the other night where her tax money's going. Nobody answered it here, we'll ask them during this meeting. I mean, she pays almost twelve hundred dollars a year down there, on her trailer. That comes to the town.
It comes to the town in the general fund. It doesn't, it's not specific to anything.
I know, it's just for her trailer, but she's like, feels like, when you guys say, oh, town's taking care of taxes, well, she's paying her taxes in the town.
But she, she pays on her individual trailer.
Yeah.
And one of the things, one of the things we've had trouble in the past with, so you know, is that there would be people not paying, not paying their taxes on their trailer. But the, the land taxes for the, for the trailer park were being paid. And, so, we have to chase the person just the trailer, so we could own the trailer, we don't want to do that either, you know?
I know.
So, it's, it's difficult.
People've asked about that. I mean, like, Denise asked about it, she asked me why I come down here that day, and I, all they give me was no deed to her trailer, and she, I know she's got deeds, why does it say that in the town?
There, there wouldn't be a deed to the trailer, it'd be a sales. It would be a, uh, because there, you only deed property.
Yeah, but wouldn't there be a deed on the trailer, could you own, own the trailer?
It's probably just a bill of sale, it's probably just a...
Just a bill of sale?
Bill of sale.
Well, Bonnie, Bonnie Rizzo, he works for the police department here, they found a deed to hers, that's the only one they found in the whole thing.
Was, was there, I, is there, does everyone pay rent on lots, or do some people, I heard some people own their lot?
Some people don't own the lots, they own the trailer.
Own the trailer, but everyone pays a lot rent?
Yeah, then there are people that pay a little bit more than lot rent for a rental trailer, because of the taxes they're included in the lien on some of the trailers.
Boy, that's complicated.
Yeah, well, that's, you don't want to, what do you want to get?
That's why I was trying to figure it out, because this program asked about it, and I came down here and asked for it, but I couldn't find what, basically, no more than what, I kind of knew.
If that's the case, wouldn't there be a separate deed for that?
Trailer.
That trailer lot? I don't...
No, the, the, the parcel itself, the land itself has one deed.
Has one?
So there's no, so, so, all the property is one tax bill. Okay? And then each individual trailer has their own specific tax bill.
Right.
Some, some trailers are owned by the park. And you rent that as well.
And that's part of, and that's part of the, that's part of the taxes on the park itself.
On the park itself.
They'd be all together.
Yep.
Those people don't pay taxes to the town.
Right, right. They, they assume that when they pay their lot rent, all that's being taken care of.
Because some of the trailers in any trailer park are owned by the park. So when you pay your lot rent, that one is more because you're renting the lot and the trailer.
I know I went in and asked for that, anyway, I could find out more information about that. It was seventy-one dollars that day, and I just found out, or, they didn't give me much of anything here. Didn't even say how much these people were paying for taxes on them, or nothing.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, it would be, you'd actually have to get that each individual home. Would have, you'd have to do that for...
So basically, every lot down there, there are twenty lots down there, so one trailer's gone, because it got burned out, and there was this tax, there's a slab there from it.
Yeah, that, see, that's just lot.
That's just a lot.
That's just... I mean, that's just the...
So they should have a record on nineteen trailers down there.
Probably have to ask for each one.
That's what I kind of asked that day, and I said, I want a record about every trailer down there, like nineteen.
Well, it...
I, I would expect him...
I think you're going to have to have, you're going to have to have the name of everybody that has a trailer.
And permission.
Yeah, and permission.
Well, it's public records.
It's part of the ta, don't we have the online, we have a tax book? Once you have the name of the individuals, you just go in by Alpha, look them up, and see what their tax, from the, from the tax book that we have online. You don't have to pay seventy-some odd dollars either, I can, you just get it, look it on the computer, I thought.
Just that, you have to have the name of each person in each trailer, like the ones that own the trailers.
Right. And it, and it's possible to, to get that. Is, it sounds like, is there, who, who could, like Chuck, uh, who would be the resource to, to say, like, he can, I'd be worried about if I was sitting here and you came in and said, I want to know who, John Doe is paying for taxes. I tell you, it's none of your business, have John Doe come and talk to me, and I'll help him get what, where the taxes are. So I, I, that's why I think you might have run into a little bit of a problem, but...
No, no, so, it is, it's public record, I could,
Okay.
If somebody asked me what Mr. Greeno was paying, I would have to tell them.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, it's public, so, where Chuck is, Chuck's was charged seventy-one dollars because, uh, after thirty minutes, which is state or state, state law, we charge, it's literally permits, permit set by the state for research. So, we just keep track of that time, if you want deed research, it'd be thirty minutes per state law. And then after that, it's going to cost you a little bit. If you want, come back and ask again, maybe they'd be more specific on what you need, but I...
I mean, I'd go through a hassle, paying seventy-some dollars a year for to give me the same stuff all over again.
You have to, you have the names of the people that own the trailer.
You may be able to do that online, is what Glenn's saying, you just go to a library.
There's the tax book.
Go to the library, get everybody, or you could go to the people and ask them if they know their tax number.
Everybody should have a tax bill.
The tax bills just came out.
Yeah, actually, yes, that's true.
They, they, everyone...
Yeah, I got my, yeah, so, you, you should have one, everybody could compile those.
Yeah, they should be able to have a copy of them right now.
But, but you say some of them aren't cooperating with you?
No, we got three or four ain't cooperating down there.
Well, they will at some time.
Because the program right now, so, they told, they talked to me before, can meet, so they couldn't make it. And, tonight, and they just said that, they were like, they got, I think, five people of, uh, eight that were frigging not paying, that are involved in it now. So, it's taking time.
Try the online, try getting everybody, it's fresh in everybody's mind right now, and, and between now and August thirty-first, we're probably going to meet a few more times, I'm guessing. Okay, so, we'll, we'll move on until, until we hear differently. Permits for food trucks.
Oh, yeah, I got an old version of this. Um, yeah, permits for food trucks. Uh, and so there was, we have the, uh, I think it's called the rolling rooster that's currently vending downtown Fairhaven. Um, and our zoning administrator said, um, you know, there's really no rules, there's no rules yes or no for that. But it does fall within the Board of Selectment's scope to allow such a thing. So, um, we were wondering if the board wanted to permit food trucks, to create a permit for food trucks in area, like we did with the outside dining.
There's not a vendor, you don't have to have vendor license in town, do you?
There's a pedal for it.
Yeah.
There is a pedal.
I did this.
But that's not really a food truck license. It's not like he's going door-to-door selling his widgets.
Well, we don't, we gotta have some sort of control. Uh, I know there's already, somebody wants to sell hot dogs in the park, and we gotta have some sort of, there's nothing in the zoning that, 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 uh, believe me, I look. And it's, if it's in our, if it's on this board to be able to allow that, we've got to come up with some sort of a policy or something. So it's not willy-nilly. Particularly if we have a new improved downtown and there's less parking.
Yeah, we've got to be able to say where they can set up, where they can't set up, and, and, I think, I think we should do it. I think we should look into it and have, have a...
Put it in our parking lot, establishing a...
Policy, but I think, right now, one of the things that came up with, and I don't know who was involved with this, was, was putting that particular food truck along, along the side, on, on, on the roadside towards, uh, you know, parallel to the road, to, into the building, to Kinder Way, was there in the, on the side. So that was kind of like the, I don't know where that discussion came from, it might have been at the planning commission, I don't know, they all went together afterwards. But, uh, I think that's, that's where they, they talked about doing that.
It's not a bad idea, because you're going to free up the parking, you're going to free up, you know, they can still walk over, I mean, they're on, Friday night, they're in front of, in front of for Kinder Way. So I, I still say, put it along the side right there, people can come out the sidewalk right to us. And you're going to have, you won't have anywhere near congestion, I think.
And you know, some of the things too, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just, I was looking to say, okay, where's, where, where's the gremlins in this one right here? And I'm going, Thursday, Thursday night, we do concerts in the park, there, uh, I wouldn't want to be given a permit for a food truck to be operating in competition with the hot dogs and, and everything, with the, and so, they're, they're absolutely, if we don't have anything in place, we need the ability, just like, uh, we don't need four food trucks downtown at the same time either.
Although, although,
In my opinion.
If you've ever been to Burlington, when they have food trucks...
Oh, I, but I was saying, do we want downtown Fairhaven to be like Burlington? I, I mean, that's a, that's another whole...
It just brings a lot of people into, into one concentrated area, that's all I'm saying.
If they're, if they're doing a competition, that's something different.
Right.
But you could still, if you weren't to do that, you could still set them up along, even along this street here in front of the Marlin. If that's something they're going to do. I, I, I don't believe in having, I wouldn't mind the one on the corner by, you know, where we talked about. Or maybe one in front of the park or something, but I don't, sitting in front of businesses.
No.
I, I have a problem.
And, and plus, don't we charge when we, when we have events in the park, we charge vendors for...
We don't.
Foods? No, but the, the, the chamber promise.
The chamber does, or the school does.
Charges, the school does, and I'm just going, okay, but, and so, we charge inside the fence, outside the fence, there's no permit.
We definitely need some...
I, I, it just...
I think we should get together and get some kind of an ordinance.
Take a, if you want, and do some research and take a pass.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull some stuff together for... Oh, great, thanks, man.
And we'll, we'll come in with, with something for us to look at.
You got to have something in, in, other than a, I believe there's somewhere where you're not supposed to have a food truck in the side of parking.
That's the discussion I had.
That's part of the thing that's in the park.
It's, I had this discussion with another, with another gentleman that, um, the park, and the park includes not just the park, you know, some of the parking around it as well.
Right.
Um, and it is not a, there's nothing approved for the park except for recreation. You can't vend, you can't, unless it's, unless it's a recreation event.
The last vendors that sold hot dogs in there were the firemen.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they had their own stand, and that was a hundred years ago, and it hasn't been anything since, and it, and that, that was some of their fundraiser, yearly fundraiser.
But that was outside the park.
Yeah, it was outside the park, it was a little snack shack outside the park, yeah. Let me, let me take a pass when...
I think we should have something.
Yep.
And just a, just a pending in the park, we did have somebody park a, a food truck just right there outside the park, and they were shooed away. So this is not, this is not in our zone, and you can't be here.
Yeah, and I mean, inside or outside, it's still the park. So, yeah. So let's, yeah, see what you can find.
Let me see what I can find.
So is, is there, is there been a problem with this food truck?
Just kind of that it's, well, some of the planning commission was wondering if there was a permit process and a parking process. And where, who gets to say what? Should it go in front of the planning commish, um, or not? Probably not, and you're finding that we don't need to do that, is what you're, and there's nothing, and, there's nothing in the zoning that would direct it to the planning commission. So that's, that's good, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to have that fight, but, um...
Yeah, if we had...
And it would be complicated, I mean, every other...
If you have an ordinance, they just come before here with a, a permit, either yes or no, and...
Right, because we, we, you'd see food truck, you'd, you'd be at the planning commission, every single meeting would have a, I'm not, and the first thing I want everybody to know is I'm not against food trucks. I love that show in Burlington, believe me. That's a great Friday night, but anyways, that's a different story altogether. So we're going to, you're going to try to get something. Uh, policy for appointments with the board.
So just, we're picking away at our policies, just updating things and bringing them into the, uh, twenty-first century. This policy is, is the board's policy for when individuals come and they want, they want to meet with the board, like, our RC flyers were. I did get some updates, Glenn sent me, uh, uh, some edits, and I set that on the table just before the meeting.
And, I mean, uh, Chuck, I, I, I looked at it, and it was, it was a pretty good policy back in nineteen ninety when it was put in place. So this policy has been working for, for a lot of years. The only thing I tried to do with the edits that I recommended, and that's what you have in front of you, is to say, we've had people come in for appointments, hadn't seen any of them stay under ten minutes. Uh, so I said, let's, uh, try to put a little, uh, real, reality to it here, so we, we could... So what I'm recommending is the policy, uh, basically says that, uh, you, it's fifteen minutes, that you'll have fifteen minutes to make a presentation and, and do questions. It used to say that the town manager or individual board members could decide to waive the time limit. And I just said, well, wait a minute here, we make a decision as board, that the select board can waive the time limit if it's, it's in the town's best interest. Uh, the board reserves the right to request, uh, uh, to review that request for a minimum of two weeks, and in other words, uh, take and wait to the next regularly scheduled board meeting to give the decision, if there's a request at the appointment that, that needs a decision, the board may waive the two-week deliberation period i- if it deems to be in the town's best interest. So again, the, probably the biggest, the biggest change from the old policy that, that you had was going from ten minutes to fifteen minutes. And instead of having individuals decide whether to, uh, increase the time if needed, that it, it was more of the select board, in which, you know, majority of the five people say, yeah, let's, let's go further.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Now, make a motion. Update.
Discussion.
Yep.
This is the whole one signed by the board members in nineteen ninety, says ten minutes. The new one says ten minutes also, you want to change that to fifteen?
The new one, there's another new one that says fifteen.
I set it on the table.
On the table. There were, there were some that, that were, were put out, and, uh, and I, I didn't get my, my input into the job before the package was put together. So, but the, uh, you have a new one that was set on top of, yeah. It goes fifteen.
Just change it to ten to fifteen.
That's what I did.
Yeah. Because it seemed like our past appointments, fifteen minutes was on the low side, and thirty minutes to, a little bit longer had happened, so I said...
The thing it is, if you, if you put a time limit on it, it's going to stop going overhashing or something.
Rehashing things over. And that was the point.
So, I agree with this one.
There's a new sheriff in town.
Got you. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept this selectance policy on appointments with the fifteen minutes in the presentation.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
We, we have the right to extend it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and ninety-nine percent of them, fifteen minutes will be minimal. And, and ninety-nine percent of them, fifteen minutes will be minimal.
Some presentations may not, may not be able to, maybe twenty minutes.
If we have somebody coming in with a project, you know, you're gonna look at more than fifteen minutes.
Yeah, and the town manager can schedule accordingly anyways, but a minimum of fifteen.
Yeah, I'll agree with it then, if we do it that way.
Fair enough. All those in favor?
Mine.
Those opposed? It's a good time. New sheriff in town. There was two new sheriffs the next year. Julian Calvin and me.
That was quite a blast from the past.
Yeah, all looks good. Okay, where are we here?
Parking lot.
Uh, parking lot. We've got a new one vending in the park. Any, anything else is, any movements? I, I can tell you zoning regulations and are, uh. Kind of. They're on hold until we get a, a copy. What they're trying to do right now is. Get a, get a copy that isn't in sixteen different, um. Forms and, you know, some of it's in Word, some of it's this and that, PDFs and it's all over the place. So they're trying to, they're trying to connect, finagle that. There's been a holdup. With Deb had some, Deb had some family illness she had to take care of and Ed Voe was getting done as the director. So now both of them are back on square one. They're supposed to hook up this week and, and get, get that going again. So we should be. Should be back. There's a, there's a couple of things that we will probably run in front of the board before we do anything and it has to do with setbacks. Um, Ed Volk suggested that we loosen up our setbacks because, uh, we're, we're way tight compared to. Particularly in, in small areas, you know, tightly densely populated areas. Like, you know, we have thirty-foot setback, maybe we go to fifteen, things like that. So you could put a porch on the side. In, in, of your house instead of, instead of fighting and having to go through a whole bunch of stuff. Anyways, that's coming, that'll come before the board. That's all I know. Town plan, same thing. There's not gonna be a lot of difference in the town plan. The, the town plan is, we are waiting from the state to find out if there are anything in our town plan that we don't. That's new that we don't have, that we haven't addressed. Don't know that they, they have added anything. We will find out. That's all I know.
Very, the town plan is very good. What I've, from what I've read from other towns, our plan is very, very good.
It, it, the last time they did a good job. They really put it to you. It took way too long, but, um, that, when they got done, it was a good, it was a good piece of work.
And did you say add vending in the park?
I, I, food truck policy is what I put down in the report.
Food truck vending, yeah.
We can, we can put the vending.
Yeah, we can add that. Okay, um, board roundtable? Rich?
One more thing on parking, I thought.
Oh, okay. I don't.
Where's our Adam Street Bridge replacement? Where, where's that at?
Uh, you know, I just had a reminder come up. We should be hearing. Look, you know what, Rich? Let me look back. We should be hearing about our grant in the next month or so, let me say. Um, but I gotta go back and get a specific date. It's so expensive right now to replace that bridge that there's no way that the town could do it itself. That we'd have to bond it to be multi-million dollar. So we're waiting on a grant.
Between five and seven million dollars.
Basically, we're still waiting on the grant.
Yeah, I know it. Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
This is gonna wrap together here, but, uh. We're gonna wait on the salt shed. That's gonna be, we're gonna try for this fall and get another bid on that. Is that it or?
Yeah, so the state recommended we update our numbers. And then again, once we got those, once we got the good numbers, we, uh, apply again for another grant. He seemed pretty, uh, pretty confident that we would get anything we needed to get that project done. Though they can't guarantee, I say that there's never a guarantee. There's never a guaranteed grants.
Where are they, where are they right now at a price?
Uh, so when we did our last, our last estimate, when we shrunk it down and used the off-the-shelf, um, system. We were a little over three hundred.
Three hundred thousand to put up a pole barn. That's ridiculous.
And it was.
We could build a new tell bar for three hundred thousand dollars.
No, we can't.
We'll build them, I bet we could.
But that, so that's not even the worst part of it.
But that's, but that's ridiculous. We started out at seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what we're gonna build it for. Whatever, putting up our tent, putting up the, uh, the Jersey barriers and putting up the, the white. Tent. Come on. I mean, this is ridiculous. Every time we go for a grant, it costs us four times more than what, what it costs to, to put something up.
Well, it's, 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 it's the times we live in right now, Jay. Every, every time we do anything, it's.
Yeah, I know. Come on, three hundred thousand dollars for an open shed. That's, that's ridiculous.
The goal of price. No, it's, that's not even. The goal of price is like double that.
We got a guy right here in trade who could probably put it up for about less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah.
I think he's been in here and talked to you more than once.
He did, but he has to follow the state bid process and he refuses to do that. So yes, he did. But I don't, I don't make those moves, okay? That's the state.
I know, but it's ridiculous.
Okay.
On the same subject, different, different, a little bit different, but. One of our local contractors is tearing down a building. In Portland. It's a sixty by a hundred, fourteen foot high. And we could buy it for twenty-five thousand dollars. He can get all the, all the specs on it, all the engineering specs for us. This is one that he put up many years ago, about twenty.
Steel building.
Steel building. For, for a town garage. And if that's something that we wanna look at, something, it's about half the money of something new right now.
Worth looking at. Geez, we're just stupid not to. We're stupid not to. Hey, Dougie?
There's sixty-seven thousand dollars sitting in the town garage reserve fund, so.
Well, even if we bought the building and put it on, just held on to it, I mean, it's not gonna take up a lot of room once it's down.
Well, are we gonna continue with that airport project as far as?
Shed in town garage? Right, that, those are the questions that you.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the logical thinking, but.
We've got the wetland permits for salt shed and did we get the permit for the town garage?
We decided to not permit town project at the time.
Okay.
We just didn't ask. We just didn't ask.
No, I asked.
Oh, okay.
No, I tried.
Okay. But, but, but we haven't asked the state, so we could redo that.
The state wanted us to permit everything at once.
Mm-hmm.
And so brought the board and. They, they said they would permit it. So that was too extreme.
We're stupid not to.
How long would it take to get the permit, do you think? I mean, it's just.
More than dog park time.
Right. Two, two, three years. We're talking, we're talking to the state again.
We're gonna go through a whole meeting without.
Sorry.
Okay.
We're almost made.
I, I think we, I don't know, what do you think?
Look into it.
We should look.
We, we need.
Go down and look at the building. There's two buildings there. But there, there's an Essex building that he, he put up and he can, he can get all the specs. He can get all the engineering prints still for this. Get them recopied, so we got them. They're, they're tearing them down because the rock underneath these buildings are more valuable than the buildings are. For quarry. So. That's what's happening.
We have a piece of land we didn't have to worry about wetland permit on. To set the thing on, it'd be an easy, easy sizzle.
Well. Given where we are and where we want to be, it's, it's a, it should be a slam dunk to the state.
Yes.
So I, I don't know. We'll, we'll start the ball rolling and see what we gotta do and see where we're at. I, I don't know. What do you think?
My concern is having the salt barn up at the airport and nothing else up there.
Doesn't make sense.
You tying up a loader. You go up there to get a load of salt. Now the loader don't start. Backhoe don't start. They're chasing all the while. Well, it's just, I don't think it's gonna work that well unless we get everything together. My opinion.
Mine too.
Sounds like, can't we, can we put some numbers together and put the whole thing and?
Well, look at the building. If you have a building, if the board's willing to get it rebuilt, I mean, it would just be a matter of a, of, of permit up there to be. The only impediment. You wouldn't have to worry about grant funding because you do it yourself.
Right. We have a pile of stuff we can level up from the bull magazines they're sitting up there for the base. Yeah. Just, when you were talking, going back to the salt shed and the state wants you to. Turn the three hundred thousand dollar salt shed, which my understanding is it's about eighty-three thousand dollars of our taxpayer money. It's our portion of that. And my, if I understand you correctly, you're saying they want us to reapply. It's gonna cost more money, but reapply. And if that three hundred thousand goes to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that still just eighty-three thousand?
Probably not.
If it is, if it is, I'm saying good. If it isn't, I'm going, okay, I'm not so sure.
Hire the money to more matches, wouldn't we?
So we have, we had a grant, we had the grant, original grant, and we have the other grant that matched it. So that was taken care of, right? The town put in the eighty-three thousand to cover the additional. So this money, the eighty-three thousand is not matched to anything yet. So you could get another grant and not supply more money to the program, depending on what it costs us. But, I mean, eighty thousand dollars, it's. If that, what's.
Right.
That's like four hundred thousand dollars worth of grant.
I've got this, I've got this group of money. If we're saying we can build it. Do the magic with Montpelier, with asking for grants and everyone making a whole bunch of money again. And while the taxpayers aren't paying anymore, I'm going, okay, we, we've invested, cause I, well, I think the way it was explained to me. If we stop the salt shed project right now. We're, we're probably gonna lose fifteen thousand. There's certainly enough money we're gonna lose.
Thereabouts. We're just out the money.
But, but there's a, there's a point where. I've heard about a salt shed for about three years and, uh, we haven't had any savings in buying bulk salt or anything else here. Do we? Stop chasing, cause this is time consuming, going reapplying to grants and coming back and. We, I thought we were all set when we took the ARPA money and said, go do it. And then nobody. Most, most of the reason, my understanding why no one wants to do it is trying to. Make everyone in Montpelier and all the regs that are, everything, the hoops they're making you jump through makes, makes it almost.
Well, it keeps raising the prices, that's for sure.
Impossible for us to pay. So I'm, I'm. This, this salt shed, I'm almo, I'm, I'm also in the position of saying, no, let's, it's, might be short money for us. Before I go and throw an additional fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money than what we have. Fine, I'll, I'll pay the, the price to the state, the fifteen thousand, because they couldn't put a bunch of people together. To work and give them hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm just about been fed up with dealing with that piece of it.
We've got two things here. The, the salt shed. I don't, I, I guess I don't even understand where we are with this all shit.
So it's, and it's, I mean, this is, this has been a problem for all, all towns and states and. Everybody across the country sent a report. Things got shut down and when things opened up, prices went up. We've been lucky that where our projects continue to move forward. Other towns haven't been so lucky. They've scuttled projects because they just don't have the money. They just didn't think forward. Where we are now is we put it out to bid. Bids came back at like almost seven hundred thousand. Which is ridiculous. So we put it back out to bid again. With a, with a smaller shed and a different system. Well, a different building system, uh, and nobody bid. So there was no bidders for the second one. So that's where we sit now. Um, we're, we're thinking that, that the engineer came back after that and said. He did another one that was bid out for, and it was closer to seven hundred. So that seems to be the building price. So that's where we're at. There's just, it costs more to build it now.
And why, why would we even consider a seven hundred thousand?
Because they cut the shed in half.
Right, to keep it as small.
Originally just put the salt and sand in the same shed. So we're defeating the purpose here. Dealing with the state. I'm telling you, the state is. It's crazy. You're better off just go do it yourself and have a.
Could, we would have had one up three years ago if we hadn't done any grant money. We would have been probably. Made savings enough in what we were paying for salt in that time, as we're sitting here still talking about doing another grant, another bid. I'm. That's why when you're, when you're asking, do we go and the state wants us to do this and that, I'm going, nah, I'm. If the answer's gonna be the, and the next time, it's gonna be more money and we've made the salt shed about as small as you can possibly make it and still.
And they're defeating your purpose because you're not gonna be able to buy a lot of salt.
Exactly.
You're not gonna save any money.
We were just far ahead to continue doing what we're doing. But that's just me.
How about coming back with a couple of alternatives?
There are alternatives.
There are none.
Re, reapply, reapply and hope to get money, put it in, or pull the plug on the program. I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know what you got for.
What's your preference? I mean, I, we got, we gotta do something about salt. We gotta get it away from where it is. And we gotta have a much more reasonable system to hold than what we do now.
Yeah, it's, it's not just a salt shed though. It's, and it's, it's too bad that this happened when it did. I mean, we just, we got stuck in a rock in a hard place, but. Do you?
We got stuck.
So, no. Had it not been for the pandemic and then the inflation, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this.
I'm tired of hearing about the pandemic. There was, there was a blame on the pandemic.
Well, I mean, this, it is though. It's like when I, when we.
But you're not telling me a project that was gonna cost you seventy-five thousand has quadrupled.
No, I'm saying that a project that would have cost us thir, three hundred thousand has doubled.
It shouldn't have cost, it's a, it's a building. For Christ's sake, it's, it's nothing, it's not like you're building something with a heating system or insulating it. It's a building. It's a pole barn.
It was, but that was the going rate back in twenty nineteen. And we had, and we were funded for that though, so that's the point. If you stop, and which is fine. I mean, if you stop now, you save the money, right? You, you lose a little bit, but you're done with the project. But where does that leave us? It leaves us back where we are, where we have a dumping garage that loses more money in heat than it does keep it.
We're not talking about a garage truck, I'm talking about a salt shed. And I, we got a pile of bull magazines up at the airport. Take that ridiculous pile that's been sitting there for the last two years? And let's, let's level the thing on out, put some Jer, Jersey barriers up and drop the salt down there. I don't care if we have to throw a tarp over the thing. It'll be cheap and we're no longer down by the river. I can tell you, I'm not spending seven hundred thousand dollars on it. I bet I, I, I can, we can pretty much put it up there for pennies on the dollar. That's the part that I, but of course here again, I know our wetland permit will probably come back and say, wait just a minute. We gave you a permit, but you need this special seven hundred thousand dollar salt shed for this permit to be good. So therefore you can't put it there. Because, so once again, we're held hostage by the state. I'm just going, hey.
They didn't have any problem putting that army.
Well, put, put that thing right in with no problem, the army reserve up there. Well, I know. So I'm, I'm, my frustration. So I'm, my frustration is, and to understand that what everyone is telling you is to go ahead, continue, reapply, that's like, that's a wing and a prayer, like waiting for the money to do a Class II road up on Scotch Hill. Good luck with that. And I'm, so I'm for, you were talking earlier about taking it into our own control. Our own control is, we can go out and put a salt shed. Now, I know we have to be careful how we do that. So if we go back to the state, we'll probably upset them because they can't make their hundreds of thousands of dollars and we'll have more barriers that we'll have to be jumping through, but okay. Let's, but we just can't afford to spend the kind of money that we're talking here, it's crazy money to be spending.
For $700,000, we ought to have a salt shed, beautiful facility with the garage, break room for the folks, all that stuff.
That's not where we live now.
I know that.
That's not the time we live in and it's not going to be that cheap.
It is if we buy a $25,000 building.
Yes, that is a deal.
That would help. It would be a start in the right direction.
I don't disagree with what we're saying, but the caveat is now, if you take it to your own control, you don't get to pay for it. And I tried to get a $7,000 fence paint, I wanted to paint the fence and we didn't do that. So now we're talking about a ton of money to put up a salt shed.
I'd rather not, I'd rather not paint the $7,000 and use the $7,000 to get my town barn because even though that fence would look nice with another coat of paint, there's nothing wrong with that fence that's out there. And what we need is not a painted fence, we need a salt shed in a town garage.
I agree.
I mean, there's a difference between what the town needs to operate and what's nice to have.
Point being, that's short money as compared to build a salt shed. If we can't afford a $7,000 paint job, how are we going to afford a $50,000 salt shed? It's the point that I'm trying to make.
Right, and the point that I'm trying to make is, we're spinning our wheels, we've been spinning our wheels on a salt shed for three years, I bet we'll be spinning our wheels three years from now on a salt shed. That's the problem.
Lots of keep dealing with the state regardless.
Oh, absolutely, and that's why I'm saying, I'm all for.
All right, we're repeating ourselves, what do you want to do?
I don't want to reapply for another grant, that's what I see.
Everybody else?
Let me do some homework.
Let's revisit this next week, or in two weeks, but let's think of options. I want to talk to Douggy too.
We still say we'll go back to Rick McPam, with Jersey barriers and the tarp.
Tent.
Yeah, tent, it's guaranteed for life, the tents is.
We will revisit this, you got anything else, Rich?
Good, I'm glad you brought us back to that.
Yeah, it's hedges around Memorial Park, who's responsible to trim that?
Joe will get that, do they need to be trimmed?
I had a request today about it and they said that they need to be done. And I had a couple of other questions, but I'm going to go through this budget again. I'm going through this budget and seeing where overtime and all these places are so far away. It's pathetic, so I'm going to sit down with you and you can explain why. I mean, we've got some of this overtime, it's $30,000 over, fully budgeted. You know, this is, it's crazy. Why do I say that?
When do we get there?
When do we get there?
All right, I'm done.
Actually, I don't have anything either we talked about, what you talked about before. So I guess we are there. Expenditure, review of financial reports.
Okay, make a motion that we do the payroll for $42,512.58.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would stay.
We need all three of us.
And I make a motion to pay the warrant for $179,000, $146.77.
Second? Questions, comments?
The biggest part of this is for the building here, correct?
Yes, that was for the elevator as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would stay.
Checkbook status, $454,000, $724.78.
Thank you. And we have an executive session for labor relations.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive sessions for Labor Relations 1 DSA 313A1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.